Okay, the January 23rd, 2020 special meeting of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education will come to order. Please rise for a salute to the flag in a moment of silence. Okay, tonight, the board will, uh, the board will... Hold on, let's just say this. Okay, okay, I'll make sure. Okay. The board will retire to a closed session following the open public session. Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Bourdain?
Here.
Mr. Molnar?
Here.
Mr. Tamburello?
Here.
Mr. Trebowiser?
Here.
Mr. Velez?
Here.
Mr. Delapetro?
Here.
Okay, Mr. Secretary, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of meetings.
Thank you, Mr. President. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted as follows: January 8th, 2020, emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star Letter, and the Municipal Clerk's Office, posted in Avonel Middle School, and the Board of Education Administration Building, and published on the school district website.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Superintendent's agenda, Dr. Zaga?
Mr. President, I have one item to present to the board. Make a motion for the superintendent's agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Molnar? I have a motion by Mr. Trebowiser, seconded by Mr. Molnar. Any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none. Any comments or questions from the public? Seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Tamburello?
Yes.
Mr. Trebowiser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Delapetro?
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Zaga, please show your presentation on the referendum.
Thank you, Mr. President. As part of the district's effort to address all of our needs throughout the township, we are proposing that the district go out for a referendum to complete various capital projects throughout the district. The needs that will be addressed by this referendum is to address our older school buildings. We have schools that were built as five separate buildings, including 22, 23, 24, and 25. School 23 and 25 have already been renovated so that the students do not have to walk outside to go from class to class, but Schools 22 and 24 still have separate buildings. Add capacity in our elementary schools. The, our LRFP, or our Long Range Facility Plan, which is submitted to the state, has a capacity that's based on the square footage of every classroom and the number of students who occupy that space. Now, it's a, it's a kind of a complicated calculation, but right now, in our elementary schools, we are showing a shortage of space. So, part of the reason why the DOE would approve of this referendum and approve of our construction plans is because we have a need for about 300, uh, we're about 300 students over our LRFP capacity. We have district-wide security and air quality upgrades. We need, still need to replace our boilers in School 18, 20, and Island Middle. We need electric service upgrades to allow for window air conditioning units in Avonel Middle and Island Middle. JFK High School renovating the existing fieldhouse. The existing fieldhouse is not ADA compliant, and it's, it's very difficult for people to get in and out of there. Our middle schools and high schools will receive rooftop HVAC units, our middle school's STEM labs, and we also, as a, not as important as the rest, but we also will be increasing the number of recreation locations for the community which, by adding more gymnasiums. By the way, a copy of this presentation is available over on the side, and it'll also be posted on the website tomorrow. Looking at our schools and the years they were built, Avonel Street School 4, which is the taller of the two buildings at Avonel 4 and 5, that was built in 1912. School 14 was built in 1924, and School 5 was built in 1948. So, the next school after that is Woodbridge High School, which is about 66 years old. So, those are our three oldest buildings. After that, we had between 54 and 69, that's when most of the construction took place here in town. We've already addressed Oak Tree Road, Ross Street, and Woodbridge Middle, which were formerly our oldest schools, and they have been renovated, and obviously Ross Street is in new construction. Our projects include replacing Avonel Street School 4 and 5. Avonel, right now, Avonel Street School is located on a busy intersection. There's no parking for the parents. It's very difficult getting the buses in when the, the traffic is heavy. It's, it's just a bad spot for a school. At one point, it was a, a good spot for a school, but at this point, it's a bad spot for a school. The plan is, um, there is a parcel of property, or parcels of property, located on Rowway Avenue. If, if you're familiar with the area, um, there's a one-story brick building called Premier Diecast, and that building has been acquired by the town, um, and, and including the, about 24 acres behind it, the Woodbridge Developmental Center. That was a state-run facility that was also acquired by the town. The town has, um, uh, sold it to developers with the provision that the front part of that property, about four or five acres, I believe, I don't, I'm not sure how many acres, but several acres in the front will be for the new School 4 and 5. It'll be completely new construction. It'll be a two-story building with a full-size gym. Um, the property in back that will be developed is going to be some sort of warehouse. I'm not sure exactly what company yet, but it is, um, it's going to be some sort of warehouse that will, uh, there'll be trucks going in and out, but there's a deal or an agreement that the trucks will only be allowed coming out of that to make a left-hand turn on Rowway Avenue and head toward Rowway. They won't be able to make a right turn and head toward Avonel. The other big item on this referendum is to merge Schools 14 and 25. School 14 is our second-oldest building. If you've been past School 14 recently, there's a fence around it because the concrete on the outside has been falling out of the building for the past two years. Uh, it's, uh, the fence is there to keep anybody, anybody away should any of the concrete fall out, but that is a, it turns out, it's a very extensive repair to fix that concrete because it would involve windels, uh, uh, windels. It involved windows replacement, it involved the lentils above the windows. Also, the school is, it's our only elementary school that's three stories that doesn't have a fire suppression system. So, it would also need a fire suppression system, it would need an elevator, it would need security upgrades, and it would need a roof. So, the, um, the total cost to renovate School 14, to bring it up to where it needs to be, is somewhere between $5 and $6 million. Even if those, even if those repairs were made, it would still be a school that, again, similar to School 4 and 5, it's in a bad location. There's no parking, um, the playground is right by a busy intersection, um, and it's, uh, arrival, school arrival and dismissal there is, is cumbersome, to say the least. So, the plan is to build an, a addition onto School 25, which is right down the street. That would take several years to build that addition, and after the addition is built, would be to transfer the students from School 14 to School 25. There are roughly 250 students attending School 14 now. There are about 360 at School 25. We, with the addition onto School 25, uh, they'll be able to handle the capacity of all, both schools, all the students of just over 700. Also included in the referendum projects are enclosing the hallways at School 22 and 24, so, again, so that the students don't have to go outside to pass back and forth between the buildings. We're adding capacity, uh, we're adding onto 25. We're also adding onto 28. We're putting a wing on School 28 that will include also another gymnasium. And there'll be the additional capacity at School 25. Right now, there are about 370 students at 4 and 5. The new school will have a capacity of 700. District-wide security and air quality upgrades, um, that may, that will include cameras, recorders, um, it will include upgrades to our front entry doors of our schools to make them more secure, and air quality upgrades, that would basically be HVAC and, or mostly window air conditioners. Uh, in the past, the PTOs have raised money at the elementary schools to replace the window air conditioners. What we would do is in one, you know, one kind of, um, phase, replace all of the older air conditioners at all the schools. That way, the PTOs would be able to save their money for other things. School 18, School 20, and Island Middle Schools still have their original boilers. Uh, this district started several years ago replacing all the boilers at all the schools. Uh, that's moving in phases. 18, 20, and Island Middle still remain there. I believe they're the last three with the original boilers. Upgraded electrical services at Avonel Middle and Island Middle, Avonel and Island, the electrical service coming into the building just is not enough capacity to provide the, the power to run the extra air conditioners. We have the air conditioners, we have the wiring, we just don't have enough power coming into the building. So, to upgrade that service, um, that will cost several hundred thousand dollars, and that's included in the referendum. I mentioned the JFK Fieldhouse, not ADA compliant. Rooftop units in the middle and the high schools, all the, uh, not Woodbridge Middle, but the other four middle schools and not Woodbridge High School because we are actually replacing Woodbridge High School's HVA system out of the budget rather than out of the referendum. But, so, the Kennedy and Colonia and the four middle schools will have rooftop air conditioning units in their gymnasiums. STEM labs at the middle schools, uh, important upgrade for our science people, um, at all, at the four middle schools. Woodbridge has already been upgraded, but the other four middle schools will get upgraded STEM labs, and then finally adding the gyms onto 25 and 28. If anybody has any questions, feel free to, to fire away. Other minor projects included in the referendum, uh, School 9 repairing the facades on the outside of the building. We're, uh, adding a bathroom at School 19 with the main office and the nurse. Our ceilings, some of the ceilings are in need of some care at School 1, 9, and 19. These are hallway ceilings, and they'll be, they'll be replaced. Fencing around the playground area at School 9, resurfacing the all-purpose room at School 21. Repair and upgrade the locker rooms at Island Middle School. Additional parking and paving at 21, 22, 24, 25, and 26. Repaving the sidewalks at 23 and 27. Basketball backboards at Colonia Middle and the water main at Woodbridge High School that breaks every two years, that will be replaced from the school to the street. All schools would receive, uh, different amounts of AC, window AC units, depending on how many are, are older and how many need to be replaced. Important, every school will get almost $190,000 for their security upgrades. We feel that's very, very important that this is addressed, like I said, either through cameras or front door security. And then the rooftop AC units, School 18 is also getting a rooftop AC unit in the all-purpose room. The important thing here is that every school gets something. 29, Woodbridge Middle, and Ross, they're all brand-new, so they're not getting anything, but everybody else is, every single school is getting something. I have the cost breakdown per project. This is the cost that we're estimating. If the bids come in at less than what these projects are estimated at, that's, that's less money we have to borrow, but, um, these are, these are what the architects have told us, totaling just under $88 million. The funding sources and the funding breakdown, so, because we were, we are going out to a referendum to the public, we are eligible for state aid. The, we could just have the town borrow the money, or the town do the, do the construction, but if we did that, we would miss out on the, just under 13.5 million dollars that the state will reimburse us for, um, doing these projects with public approval. So, we, just like in 2017 when we did the, did the referendum, we're going for public approval to make sure that, A, that the public is in agreement, and B, to, uh, make sure that we can secure these extra funds. The district will be contributing $5 million, so the total amount of money that will be bonding is just under 70 million.
Just a second?
Yes, sir.
The $5 million from the district, is that coming from one budget cycle, or are we spending that over multiple budget cycles?
Uh, Mr. Harris, that will be over several years.
Over several years?
The length of the projects that it takes.
Okay, thank you. But is that likely for the soft costs for engineering and architectural design work? Or, or is that more towards the, the capital construction side?
Um, probably a little of both.
Okay.
It would include some of the projects that we don't need full architectural and designs for, things like air conditioners, things like that.
Okay, great.
So, as I mentioned, the project that, in Avonel, the warehouse project in, in Avonel, simply stated, the money will go from, from that project to the town, the town will give it to us, and we will pay our debt service every year. There will be no increases due to this referendum to your taxes, the same as it was in 2017. Um, our project in 2017, which are actually still ongoing, Ross Street, Woodbridge Middle, and St. Cecilia's, which is now Oak Tree Road School, that was funded by, in the same fashion, money going from the town to the school to the debt service. As I said, the referendum, um, provides us with the additional state aid. Only part of the construction costs are covered, and that, that again, is a complicated application, um, but only, we are getting maximum of state aid that, that we could possibly get. And as I said, no tax increase associated with the construction, just like in 2017. Sales from the township properties and taxes generated from the new warehouse from the Avonel project will fund the 2020 referendum. So, when the, uh, this, the state was using the Child Developmental Center, they were not paying property taxes. Now that it's a private land, they will be paying property taxes. Student movement, as I mentioned, um, at a, we're hoping that most of the construction is done by September 2022. Once the, uh, addition is completed at School 25, students will move from School 14 to School 25. The surplus seating that we're providing at not only 29, 25, and 11 is for, we will have extra students, or extra seats, or extra capacity for any students that happen to enter our district due to the, um, housing projects throughout the town. And these additional elementary classrooms satisfy the LRFP capacity shortage. We met with the 14 parents the other night, and it was a, uh, pretty positive meeting, I think. The, one of the questions that came up is, well, what will happen to the property of 14 after, after the school isn't there anymore? Well, we can guarantee that it won't be housing, we can guarantee that it won't be retail. We're looking at some sort of park or playground area with enclosed parking, but we can guarantee that it will not be housing and it will not be retail. The 4 and 5 property, um, no housing there. What we are thinking about is possibly moving the administration building into School 5, the, the one-story part of School 4 and 5, and maybe even the trades over there. Right now, our, our trades, our plumbers, our electricians, our carpenters, and all their supplies, half of them are in Avonel Middle, and the other half are in Woodbridge High School. They're occupying instructional space. So, if we can move them out of there into non-instructional space, that will free up more space for, for our kids.
Just a second?
Yes, sir.
Is the, the public get a chance to ask questions after the entire presentation? Okay, all right. I just heard some...
Sure.
I wasn't sure if someone wanted to ask a question now, but you're waiting till the end. Okay.
So, our timeline, the referendum is March 10th, 2020. Polls are open from 2 to 8. After, um, should the referendum be approved, we would borrow the money during the spring and summer, and, um, the bidding would begin once we had the money. The construction timeline is about two years per project for the larger construction, so Avonel, if we can start in the winter 2020, should be finished in the fall of 2022. Now, we, we just went through some trying experiences with our two construction projects now, and, you know, these are estimates on when it will begin and when it will end. The good thing is that, um, the folks at Avonel won't be moving to their new school until it's completely finished, and they could stay, should the project not be finished in September 2022, they, there will be no rush to move over there. Same with Lafayette Estates and School 14. So, March 10th, 2020, we're asking that everybody come out and, and support this effort. Um, we, we'll have the architectural drawings of all the projects up on our website. They, if they're not up yet, they'll, should be up tomorrow, um, and you could call me or, or email me with any questions that you might have. Also, as I mentioned, this referendum will be, uh, upon, or this PowerPoint will be up on the district website tomorrow. We've also included the polling locations for, for everyone. That day, March 10th, by the way, will be a half-day for our elementary and middle school students, so when the polls are open and the public is, is in the building, there won't be any children. Mr. President, I humbly submit this presentation, and I hope that the board supports. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zaga. Any questions for the board?
Mr. Harris?
Well, final question, more of a comment. I, I thought I'd just emphasize it a little bit further, uh, expanding on what Dr. Zaga had mentioned about the funding mechanisms. For, for those who are here and those watching at home, uh, the mayor has, along with Dr. Zaga, a number of board members, we've gone on a roadshow, we've met with a number of PTO meeting with, with a number of PTOs, so I just wanted to expand on, on what Dr. Zaga talked about with the site in Avonel. I'm sure everyone's thinking, okay, all right, this is, this is great, $87 million, it's got to come from somewhere, so I wanted to just, uh, expand on that a little bit. So, uh, a couple of years ago, the Woodbridge Township purchased the former Woodbridge Developmental Center. It's about 50 acres for $5.2, $5.3 million, and then there was another estate property that Woodbridge Township purchased for about $2 million. Uh, so, uh, after a $7 million investment, they, uh, they marketed this, uh, this land to develop, developers, that's, uh, you know, what a town in, uh, central New Jersey would do for the purposes of redevelopment, and a developer is purchasing the land from Woodbridge Township for, I believe the mayor's used the number of $51 million. Uh, so, the million-square-foot warehouse that would go in the back along the train line there, that piece of property, the warehouse, would be provided with a, a payment in lieu of taxes. Instead of taxes, a, um, a business could negotiate a, um, a set, a tax rate, a payment in lieu of taxes over a course of a 30-year period. Uh, typically, it starts around 80% of what the taxes would have been, and it grows up to 100% over the course of a third, over the course of the 30-year period. So, that taxpayer, that, that warehouse, will pay about $2 million in year one, and around year 30 will pay about $4 million. So, that $51 million in, in cash that the developer's purchasing the property for, plus the, um, I forgot the, the specific end number, but whatever the, excuse me, the warehouse will pay in taxes over the course of the 30 years, that money combined, as Dr. Zaga had mentioned, will be used to pay down the debt service for the $87 million that we'll be borrowing. Um, so, I, I just wanted to, to explain that just a little bit further, so everyone understood the, the funding mechanism just, just a little more clearly. Uh, so, just wanted to highlight that, and, uh, you know, thank you to Dr. Zaga, Brian Wolferman, the, the ad hoc committee that's worked on this past couple of years. This, uh, this has been in the works for a little while, and, uh, you know, hopefully we have a successful vote tonight, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any other, any other questions or comments from the board?
Mr. President?
Mr. Molnar?
I just wanted to thank Dr. Zaga, as Mr. Harris said, and the ad hoc, um, committee too, for their work on this. I understand with, with this bond referendum, if it does go through and the construction that's going to happen, you know, the one thing people do fear is to change, getting away from what was comfortable, um, what we knew. When I got elected to this board first in 2005, it was the first time that this district, we couldn't even pass a budget, but the community got together and passed the bond referendum. I think it was something like $89 million, and we were able to add some classrooms and fix some windows and, you know, for years, it's always been putting a Band-Aid onto the problem. Um, the buildings were getting older, older, and older, but we started to see new additions and new classrooms, uh, to our buildings, and now we're at the point where we're building new schools, and that seems to be the philosophy now for this district. You know, we always talk about our kids learning in a 21st-century environment. Well, this is how you have to start it, by journeying out and, and putting our kids in classrooms with brand-new lighting and all the, you know, the technology that's out there, and the safety that's out there, and, um, you know, and, and that's what happens, I believe, by supporting this. Is the world going to be the same the next, after, you know, children have to move out of a school? I get that. And when we did the first bond referendum, we added extra classrooms, and it did. Children that were living behind the Woodbridge Car Wash were being bused, you know, 35 minutes to School 20 in Colonia. They were able to move a little bit closer to their house in Port Reading, School Number 9, and, you know, it was out of the comfort zone, but you know what? The kids went into a brand-new wing of a building, and it's just a better learning environment. So, I know there's going to be a lot of, you know, nervousness out there, but at the end of the day, if you go to School 11 and you see the new Ross Street School, and you see the environment that these students are in, you know, Woodbridge Middle School, you know, it ran over construction time, but at the end of the day, when those students moved into that building and they have all this brand-new technology, this is what learning in the 21st century is. So, um, I just, I'm saying I'm in support of this. I think this is well-needed in this district. We do need new schools, we do have to, to move forward and to catch up with the times, and I just want to say thank you for all the hard work that was put into this.
Thank you, Mr. Molnar. Any other comments or questions for the board? Okay, seeing none. Finance and insurance agenda, Mr. Tamburello? Oh, any questions for the public?
David Pinkwitz, Island. One of the things that was stated a few minutes ago was that you can guarantee there won't be, I think it was, no housing units, no businesses. This is for the School 14 property. Uh, for the 4 and 5 property, it just said no housing, possible relocation. So, one, I just want to clarify how you can guarantee it. Like, is it, the school district is remaining the owner of the property and will not sell the property of both properties?
Mr. Pinkwitz, uh, Mr. President, uh, we will keep the 4 and 5 property, 14 property that may, that's probably going to be involved in a swap so that we can get the land that the new 4 and 5 will be on. And if we, if we do vacate the administration building, that may involve in that, be, be involved in that land swap also. But no, we, there is, we have been, um, we made that promise to the residents of Ford's and the people of the School 14 community that they have our commitment. There won't be any developing or, um, retail at the 14 site.
Okay. Um, I mean, it just seems, I can understand for no housing, I don't know who would want a house where School 14 is anyway, uh, but it seems like it would be a, a likely location for some retail, potentially being that corner, busy intersection. Uh, so, I'm a little concerned why we would leave that on the table as it can't be anything else, uh, given that it's, that avenue pretty much is fairly, you know, has more retail as you go down the street, at least on that side of the road.
When we met with the parents there, they were, they were pretty clear that that was what they wanted.
Understood, but that's a small group of parents, there's a whole township here. Uh, School 4 and 5, uh, you know, that's a large parcel, it would seem, you know, what it would likely be used for. Uh, you talk about relocating district offices. If you were going to do that, why didn't we relocate and knock down School 1, uh, you know, the original School 1 where the district administration building is today, and then the new Ross Street School could have taken on that property as well, uh, because it's all attached. Uh, instead of having the school and its old school and the new school right next to each other, uh, you know, that would have been something to visit years ago. Obviously, it's too late for that, but what, what would the plan be for the administration building if you're moving over, or are you just moving some offices but not all?
Well, again, this is, this is a couple of years away, but, uh, it would make sense if the 4 and 5 building is vacated, if we could move... the four and five building is vacated, if we could move our offices over there. There wouldn't be any traffic. There wouldn't be any arrival and dismissal of students. It would ease up on the traffic over there, ease up on the parking. The land that the administration building is at now, that would either be traded with the town or could further be developed or even be for parking. But at this point, to answer your question, we, the reason why we didn't move when the School 11 construction was going on because we had nowhere to go.
Okay. You know, I'm, I'm glad to see at least as part of the plan, there will be a consolidation of schools. I am a little bit concerned and, you know, so here, so after this is over, assuming this is passed, you still have a large number of schools that are 60 years old, 50 years old, almost all the schools, except for the few that were just recently renovated. You know, and, and while we have some plans for them, you mentioned doing something in almost every school, I guess my concern is we have a lot of money in this district spent on administration, on things like, and administrative expenses in general, not just the administrators themselves, but your secretarial staff, everything that every building comes with. We spend a lot of money and you have a, a similar-sized district in terms of students, like Edison, which has 19 schools, and then you go to Woodbridge and we have, you know, I don't, I don't even know the current number, 25 schools or somewhere around there?
Twenty-six.
Or 26. You know, there's a, you know, it would be nice to see a, a longer-term plan that resulted in some consolidation. So we didn't have, we're still going to have the same number of teachers, give or take, because we'll have the same number of students that need to be taught. But we do spend a lot of money on just extra expenses, you know, every principal for schools that have vice principals and any secretarial staff, any custodial, you know, every building has custodial staff, every building has, you know, a lot of different things that go on, you know, just keeping the lights on and the power. So it would be nice to see a, what I, what I would think is a more long-term plan unless you're saying, are, is the district asserting that this is all we'll need to do for, let's say, the next 10 years? Or would we expect to see another referendum a few years from now?
Well, first, getting back to the consolidation, the reason why we're consolidating is because of the state of School 14. The price to fix it compared to the price for an addition, a new addition, it just didn't seem feasible to, to spend more money on, on School 14. So that was kind of, it, it, the goal there was not to merge. The goal was to either repair 14 or to have those kids move over to 25. So that, if, if, as we mentioned to the parents when we met with them, if that school was built in 74 instead of 14, you know, it wouldn't be falling down and we wouldn't need to, to merge with another school. The, the motivation behind the merge is the state of the school and the amount of money it would take to renovate it.
No, I understand that, but my, my suggestion is there should be a reason that we'd want to merge schools, that we are spending a lot of, an excess amount of money just keeping numerous buildings open when a similar district has, you know, obviously they have larger schools. Their high schools are larger, everything's larger overall, which is why they have fewer schools. But we have a similar district right next door that gets by with many fewer schools. And obviously, coming with that will be, it will be a lot less expensive to have administration, a lot less expensive in terms of these extras that you have, like I said, secretarial staff, you know, custodial staff, other things that just, just, you know, the utilities.
Well, from what, from what I understand, Mr. Pinkwitz, I believe Edison is going out for a 180-some-million-dollar referendum because they have no room. So...
It was defeated.
It was defeated in December. They're going out again in March. So the fact that, you know, smaller schools is, is a great, or less schools is a great idea until you run out of space.
Right. But we do have some district schools which are not being addressed in terms of expansion here.
Correct.
That do have more space. Some don't. Four and Five was an example of a school that has no space in terms of property. But other schools do have more property. You know, some of the middle schools have more property around them. Not all of them, but some of them. You know, and there might be a longer-term plan that could take that into account, that could, you know, reorganize how we, we educate our students in the long run so that we don't need to keep coming back to the taxpayers. And when we talk about, you know, so, you know, I, I appreciate the discussion about the pilot programs, tax abatements. However, you know, that doesn't come for free. I mean, it, you know, it comes across as it's coming for free. Hey, we're not paying directly. This business is paying. Except every time one of these tax abatement programs comes across, the reality is that it's no longer part of the regular tax base of the township. So when this district gets, and I don't remember the exact percentage, like in my recent tax bill, didn't divide it that much, but just said two-thirds basically of the taxes come from outside the municipality, one-third for the municipality. However, whenever a tax abatement happens, the municipality gets 90% and, and the county gets 10 and the school district gets zero unless they are so kind as to share some of the money, which is what apparently is happening here. So the, you know, just, there isn't, it isn't all for free. And even the last referendum, now this doesn't have the same problems as the last referendum. Last referendum, the buildings were free, but the teaching was not. So when we went to full-day kindergarten, which was part of the last referendum, that wasn't free. That came out of our taxes. This time, it doesn't appear that there's something similar to that, at least not that's obvious. And I'll have to review this. This is the first time I've really seen it and, and analyzed it for my own personal self. You know, I, you know, by the time all this is done, my children will be out of the district. You know, so I'll have to, you know, but see, you know, as a taxpayer, what I think makes sense for me. But I do have some concerns that, that we still, we, we're addressing a few things, but we still have the general problems that we've had. We had, you know, we had all the problems with School 18 and the building, you know, with, with its problems over the course of the last year or so. You know, are we addressing all those things everywhere? Are we making sure that all the buildings are up to code and up to the health needs of our staff, of our children? So I do have some concerns. I, I, you know, it sounds great on paper, but, you know, I just, I really have some concerns about whether this makes sense, at least without having a more, understanding the entire plan over years of what this district plans, you know, with all these, what are still mostly old buildings. Fortunately, after this would be over, no more pre-World War II or pre-World War I buildings. We just have the one administration building that's pre, you know, Spanish-American War, but we can deal with that another time. But, but it, but, but we still would have buildings that are talking about, you know, in the 50s, 60s, and that's the bulk of the schools in this district. Thanks.
Mr. President?
Mr. Harris?
I just wanted to clarify a couple, a couple of things. Not, not corrections, but, but, you know, something from, from the board side. And Mr. Pinkwitz, thank you always for, for thoughtful comments and, you know, pushing us to, to look even further ahead. And I think if we're successful with the referendum, we, we should think big in terms of, you know, next 30 years. How do we one day replace the, the schools that were built in the 50s? So I, I think we could start thinking conceptually on that. I did want to just highlight, as Dr. Zega had interjected in regards to the parents' feelings about the future of School 14. They are, as I would say, the, the only one arguably getting the short end of, of, of the deal here because they, it is their home school. They're the only ones being asked to move and move into a new community. I think the least we could do is most certainly honor our promise to them that when we tell them we're going to demolish the, the empty school and turn it into a community use playground, recreational space, where we would be very wise and right to do that. There's also a, a practical implication in regards to School 14 becoming a park. And Dr. Zega and I have talked about this a couple of times now, is the need for likely carving into the existing park in front of School 25 in reference to assisting with the, the flow of traffic in and out of that school from Ford Avenue, the need to take parkland for, for additional parking and/or egress such as an expanded roadway to, to allow for a smoother flow of traffic. In exchange for that, we would be required to make up for said lost parkland. So the School 14 property would be the most ideal and logical trade-off of land that was once developed becoming undeveloped as, as parkland and, and again, in exchange for the taking away parkland from School 25's property. So I wanted to just highlight that, that, that kind of soft reason for, for turning the School 14 property into park, but also the, the very pragmatic and practical reason for turning the School 14 land into parkland. By, I just wanted to hit on the pilot. I was the one who kind of expanded on it earlier. The, the property that I had mentioned earlier was government property in the past, the, that Avonel sighting, the Avonel, Woodbridge Developmental Center and the Department of Children's and Families School that is now defunct. Neither of those properties were paying property taxes. Fifty acres of land in central New Jersey were not paying property taxes. I would argue that in the 50, 60 years that those two buildings were there, the township lost out on hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars in property taxes. As Dr. Zega had mentioned, that will now be property tax-paying property. It's finally on the rolls. And, and just to clarify to the public at, at large, when, regardless of how many pilots Woodbridge Township enters into or any municipality enters into in terms of pilot agreements, when the school district sets its budget, it's irrespective of what the town effectively has coming in as far as new revenue. We, Mr. Wolferman would back me up on this. We set our budget, we send it to the municipality to collect for us and they pay us every dime that we seek. There, without regard for the, the valuation in town or, or the, the town's ability to raise that. So we get every dime as a school district. So Mayor McCormick and the Town Council could enter into as many pilot agreements as, as they see fit and responsible, and we will always get every dime that we are entitled to by law. So I just wanted to clarify that, that we, we as a district have never been shorted with the, the growth of, of pilots. And I'll, I'll sing, you know, Mayor McCormick's praises when, when he talks about pilots, you know, in relation to a building of warehouses or power plants. They don't produce children. They, they close at night. So those properties are, when they're developed and a pilot agreement is given to incentivize a new business, we're, we're not, as a school district, burdened by their, by their development and their attraction to Woodbridge Township, and they're effectively only cash positive for us. So you're talking nearly $30 million in recreational and athletic fields have benefited from pilots. The 2017 bond referendum and nearly $57 or $59 million in school projects benefited from pilots at, at, at no impact to, to the taxpayer in terms of the construction of those buildings. And here we are again talking about another $87 million in, in school improvement projects, again, at no impact to the property taxpayer. And all that was made possible by frankly, our location as, as a town, as a town in central New Jersey at the intersection of the Parkway and the Turnpike were an attractive place to do business. And a credit to Mayor McCormick and the Woodbridge Economic Development Corporation for aggressively attracting new business and new development to new power plants and I'd probably say at this point, dozens of new warehouses that, that don't impact our schools, but, but, but pay their fair share in taxes and, and we're, we're all the better for it. So that's, that's my piece. And I just wanted to clarify those few things to, to the public. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any other questions off the board from the public?
Hi, Christine Estenewski, Port Reading. So with the relocation of School Four and Five from a centralized Avonel location to more so the bottom outer edge, will this trigger a redistricting?
Mr. President, no. This, the same, we anticipate the same students who attend School Four and Five now will attend the new Avonel Elementary School when they get there.
Okay. And then my only other question, with the new location of Four and Five, currently I don't believe that there's a traffic light in that area. Would we be working with the township to place one over there to help with the warehouse and then the school just having a lot of cars and trucks coming in and out?
I believe that was discussed. I, I'm not exactly positive, but if you gave me a call tomorrow, I'd get that answer for you.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. President?
Mr. Muller?
And that's a great question because when the bond referendum of 2005 was passed and everybody went to the polls and they were voting on they were going to get windows, there were some schools were getting an addition, you know, a couple neighborhoods were going to move to get closer to their home. And then the board was presented with a full-blown-out redistricting plan. And basically, everybody went off the rails because it was just total naught of what everybody was promised, you know, when that bond referendum first went in to the polls. So that, that was a great question and that answer, you know, needed to be out there, that we're not using this bond referendum to, to redistrict the whole, you know, school district.
Thank you, Mr. Muller. Any other questions from the public?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Sardo and I live in Fords. I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, so I have a couple of questions. One of them being that you mentioned to repair School 14 would be five to six million, but to do the additions on School 25 will be about 16. So I don't get how that's budget-friendly. If you could explain that.
Mr. President, even if we did the repairs on School 14, it wouldn't solve the traffic problems. It wouldn't solve the location problems. And we wouldn't be able to do the repairs while the, the children are in the school. So we'd have to relocate the children for maybe years in order to do that.
When you say years, you'd probably say about the same two years that it would take to do this whole...
Could be.
Remodel.
Right. And, and, and School 25 had a addition, a pretty significant addition in 2007 and, and renovation. So most of that school is, is relatively new. And then what we would add on to 25 would be absolutely new. So rather than going into a retrofitted school at 14 for double the price, yes, it, it is double the price, but you're getting a new school. And like I said, it's, you're still, even if the school is renovated at 14, you still have the same location problems, the traffic, the parking, things like that.
Well, location in that aspect, because location has to, I guess, convenience for the parents and the, and the community. The location's ideal because it's kind of centralized to everybody that lives in Fords. So in that aspect, it's great. Traffic-wise, agree it's not ideal at all. But that being said, I also have a question in regards to, and it's probably not really related to this, but maybe it could happen in the future. Why don't our schools have more like green areas? Why are they so concrete? Why can't they have more? I don't know, like, we're, we're going into, we're going into like, everything is all about saving the planet and being eco-friendly and we're trying to teach our kids this in every aspect of their lives, yet we don't have trees on school grounds or we don't have areas where, I'm, okay, let me backtrack. I'm from Europe, so their schools are basically in the woods and children play in the sand when they go to the playground. And it's such a different learning experience. So I was just wondering why that doesn't happen here. And if you guys ever thought about that and if you wanted to incorporate that.
School 14 never had any grass.
Well, I'm not saying just 14 specifically. I'm just saying like...
Well, actually, 14 is, is probably the only school that doesn't have any grass.
It has nothing.
It's been there, I'm from Fords, I've been there my whole life. 14, 14 playground was, actually before it was the blacktop, it was all stone. You know, and the kids, the kids played out there. School 25 has plenty of grass, you know.
But they don't go on it though, right? They don't really have recess on it.
What, the kids at, at 25?
Yeah, because my, my son goes to 25 for YMCA.
Hmm.
And they're always restricted to just that little playground.
The Y, the Y.
The YMCA, yeah.
But the school will have access to those green areas?
They're out there. They use the softball field. They use the basketball court.
Okay. Because I think that's important for our children's upbringing. It's like, it gives them a whole different sense of...
I agree, but one of the main... I agree, but one of the main reasons that it's, the, the recess area is blacktop because if it rains, you could still use it.
Let's not go there, because if it rains in School 14, it's just like a river, because children have to jump over puddles.
But you may have to wait, you know, if it's gray, if it's all gray, I say you may have to wait a couple of days for it to dry out if it's blacktop, and that's really the practical reason why they want to install blacktops for recess areas.
Okay. I don't know if my colleagues want to say anything, but thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Harris?
Ma'am, I wanted to point out to you, when, when your child goes off to Ford's Middle School, they actually have a new, it's about a year or two old now, an outdoor classroom that one of the teachers put in for a grant, I forget how much it was, what, about $30,000 or something like that? It was kind of a modest size, a lot of money to me, but, but modest in terms of grants, and they, I think for the biology classes, they actually go out, and they had to have like a whole seating area set up, and it's, it's like the biology, you, you should look into that, and maybe we could get you more information on that.
I'm sure I will, I have.
That's pretty cool, but I think it's the only school to mine now, it actually has an outdoor classroom. So, we, we are mindful of, of trying to do more of those things.
Would that be something?
And if you have any additional ideas, we'd love to hear it.
Right, would that be something you guys would consider for other schools as well?
I'm sorry?
Would that be something you would consider for other schools?
Perhaps, you know, the space availability, and I think those teachers really took the bull by the horns and, and did a whole presentation to us on that, perhaps, Mr. Muller, it looks like he's got his hands up there.
Yeah, no, I was going to say due to Chair, Mr. President, I think School, the brand-new School 11 has, I believe, the courtyard in the middle, isn't that used for outdoor?
It's Wi-Fi.
It's Wi-Fi accessible, it's, it's an outdoor classroom in the courtyard.
Okay.
So, the newer building designs do have that in there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the public?
Hello, Al Omer, here, Port Reading. I just had some questions regarding the STEM labs at the middle schools. Number one, is it going to be new equipment, or are the current science classrooms being repurposed or refurbished? Are there going to be, I'm sorry, one second, are there going to be upgrades to the current science classrooms? And if that's the case, I'm guessing the construction would take place during the summer versus during the school year?
Mr. President, answer is yes to most of what you said. It would be, plan is to take one classroom and make it more or less a state-of-the-art science engineering type of class with new equipment. Wouldn't be all of them, it would just be more or less one of them. And yes, it would take place, the, the construction would take place over either the summer or the winter, whenever the students are there. Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Mr. President?
Sorry, I swear as the last one, I swear as the last one. To, to answer your question, Mr. Latorre, I, I saw in the renderings, and I have a decent memory, that Isla Middle School's former media center library will be converted into that STEM lab, and I know at Ford's Middle School, the same fate will, will happen to their, their former library effectively. It's being used as like a learning commons now, but that will also be flipped into the STEM lab. And actually, I believe Avonel Middle School, this former library will also be flipped into the STEM lab there as well. So, I couldn't speak to the other two, just based on memory. Well, actually, Woodbridge Middle already is receiving, actively receiving their STEM labs, so Colonial Middle School's the only one I couldn't speak to off the top of my head, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Hi, my name is Adelaide. I'm here about School 14. So, although I feel like it's a foregone conclusion at this point, because I don't see any renderings of maybe showing actually what School 14 would look like if you were to repair it, but I do see renderings of how School 25 would look, you know, after you guys have added the addition and things like that. Did you guys ever do a rendering of School 14 with some type of, with the repairs done, maybe with the architect who designed School 25 with those corrections, how it would look if we would actually have everything that needs to be done, done to School 14? Did we have a rendering done of that ever?
Mr. President, we didn't have renderings, we had estimates from the architect. All these projects started with estimates from the architect about what it would cost to do all this, and then the renderings came second. Really, the only change for 14 would be an elevator and the, the fire suppression system, so it wouldn't really be any different footprint or anything that you would note from the outside.
So, the thing is, is that a lot of people, at least a lot of parents that I've spoken to, would prefer to keep School 14, would prefer to deal with fixing the traffic issues, like say dropping off kids, like by putting a one-way sign there, as some people do, for during school hours, so that the flow of traffic is better. Is there any way that we could not have School 14 on the referendum so that we could have it outside of what is being voted on for March 10th? Because it doesn't seem like it's set up in a way for School 14 to not be voted down because of the way it's worded. Who would want to have, to not have money go to their school? The only, only school on this referendum that is being basically closed down would be School 14, so I can't see why it wouldn't pass with the wording that basically has been put before. Is there any way to not have it on this referendum?
Mr. President, the way that the referendum voting works, it's, it's all or nothing. So, you, you can't, you can't pick and choose which one. So, the public is, has one question of whether we can do all these projects. This started, and I don't know if you were at the meeting the other night, but this...
Yes, I was.
This, you know, so you, you know this discussion and this debate has been going on with the board for years, and we have tried at School 14, we made, we changed the main entrance, we made the road in the back, you know, we, we had different things to, to try and make it work over there, but the fact that the masonry on the outside of the school is falling off, you know, it, we have to, we're kind of backed into a corner, we have to make a decision at this point. And we certainly understand how you feel, and this is why we've been debating this for, for, for over two years, to try and figure out what to do. But at this point, it's our, it's our second oldest building, it's our smallest building by far as far as capacity, and, you know, as I mentioned, even if we could fix it, the location problems will remain. I, I get more complaints from residents from School 14, of the, the residents who live on the side streets who can't get to their houses when schools, when students are arriving and being dismissed. You know, by far, more than any other elementary school, I get more complaint, you know, more traffic complaints from the residents surrounding School 14. And it, right now, usually the capacity is around 200, it's up, it's up to 250 this year, so that just means more cars, more traffic, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a very, very difficult decision, but, you know, when we talked about this with the board, and, you know, when I think about this decision, not only I think it's the best decision for now, but I think it'll be the best decision 20 years from now.
Okay, seeing as a foregone conclusion, and saying, and speaking of 20 years from now, so, as the gentleman was saying before, and as I mentioned during the meeting on Tuesday, will that space be designated as a green space? Will that space be given the type of protections that you're mentioning from the state so that there cannot be any type of retail or housing put there, much like Ford's park is? Will that be the designation that would be given to that space?
If, if it's a land swap and it becomes a park, then we can't develop it, and that's probably the best way to ensure that. So, if the town, if we, if we, between the administration building and the new Four and Five land and School 14, if we, if the town has that and designates it as a park, then that's probably the best way it can be developed on, because the town has to maintain a certain inventory of, of acreage for parks, and they wouldn't be able to develop on it.
So, it couldn't be sold later in, back to the city, and then maybe sold to a developer later? Is that what we're saying?
I don't think there's, there's an instance where we've sold a park for...
Yeah, no, no, we've never done that. Through the Chair, if that property is designated green acres, if I believe if you did take that parcel of land for like a school, you would have to replace it somewhere. And I know, the one thing that we wanted to see before we actually went forward with this was, we wanted to see a rendering of what that park was going to look like. So, that way, when we presented this plan, you know, we could say, this is going to be on the property where 14 was, you know, the rendering of what the, the park was going to look like. It will be a park, it won't be retail, and it won't be housing. I can guarantee you that.
Okay, so, in the foreseeable future too, because, I mean...
No, we, I, I don't think there's any municipality that, like Dr. Zega said, that would go into a community and say, hey, we're going to sell your park so we could put up a retail store.
Okay.
So, I, I, believe me, I do not ever, ever see that being anything but the park that's, that's going to be proposed there.
Okay, okay, those are my questions, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Finance and Insurance agenda, Mr. Tamburella?
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance and Insurance Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, presents the following seven items. This evening, I move for the adoption of the foregoing...
Do I have a second?
Oh, I've been corrected, it is one item in seven parts. So, this evening, I'm moving for the adoption of the single one item. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Tamburella, do I have, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, but Mr. Muller, any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, any, any comments or questions from the public? Seeing none, roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Muller?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Tamburella?
Yes.
Mr. Trebweiser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
And Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Bush, do you have any recommendations?
None at this time.
Is there any old business that should be brought before the attention of the board? Okay, seeing none, are there any new business that should be brought to the attention of the board? Seeing none. Okay, in keeping with past practice, we will open this portion of the meeting for questions and statements from the public. If you wish to say something, please come to the microphone, provide your name and part of the township which you reside in for the record, and please limit your comments to no more than five minutes in accordance with Regulation 1100D. I will not answer any questions until you have completed your five minutes to allow you the full opportunity to say what you need to say, ask you not to interrupt your time. Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, closing the public portion. Okay, Ms. Anderson, please read the closed session statement.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to motion for the approval of the following closed session statement. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the board must go into closed session in order to discuss subjects exempted from the public portion of our meeting. The discussion to be held in closed session will be to receive attorney-client advice regarding board member conduct. Any information regarding a closed session discussion will be released to the public when the reasons for discussing these matters in closed session no longer exist.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Anderson. Okay, when we can come back from a closed session, we're just, we're going to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
We're not going to take any, any further action.
Second.
Second, Mr. Trebweiser? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, okay. Motion to be...
Some motion.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, make, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Some motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.